And we're live.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the Town of McCandless June 22, 2020, meeting. And council was previously in an executive session for to conduct an interview for Chief of Police. And our invocation will be from Councilmember Clonan and Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. In the words of Shirley Chisholm, "You don't make progress by standing on the sidelines, whimpering and complaining. You make progress by implementing ideas." Heavenly Creator, please give your elected representatives the strength, the wisdom, and the courage to implement the ideas that will help the Town of McCandless continue to grow as a vibrant, welcoming, peaceful community for all of its residents and visitors. We thank you for keeping the men and women who serve and protect us safe from harm and for giving our community constant hope for continued recovery during these challenging times. Amen. Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice.
And heads up, we have Carolyn with us now.
Oh, good.
Yep.
Couple of announcements. Town Hall is now officially open, but please do as much business as you can electronically or by mail or make an appointment before just dropping by. I'd like to also thank all town employees for their flexibility and indulgences during all this work-life changes of the past few months. And a special thanks to our town administration for their outstanding leadership and creativity and sheer grit to get it all done and to keep everything moving. I know that I am, and I'm sure all of council is greatly appreciative of the quality of individuals that we have supporting our town. So I wanted to tell everyone, thank you for that. Also, I wanted to let everyone know that the town meetings will continue to be on Zoom through the end of July. We'll reevaluate as we get a little closer to that time on how long that we want to stay remote like this. I would also like to announce the Heritage Center is going to be open June 24, but they're going to be observing strict COVID guidelines provided by the PA Recreation and Park Society. So the Heritage Center is going to be open. And also a notice to council, boards, everyone associated with the town that our diversity harassment training is going to start July the 8th. There'll be several opportunities to sign up to participate in that. That's committees, boards, employees, public safety. All of council members are required to attend that. And council administration days will be posted separately. So just kind of keep an eye out for that and we'll let you know, but that's coming our way. Okay, is there a public comment right now? And this, this public comment can be about anything because our public hearing will have additional public comment after the public hearing about the public hearing issue. So is there public comment, RJ?
Yes, we've got two people signed up to speak at this point. The first one is Rich Mangieri. So I'm going to set the camera request now, Rich.
Okay.
There you are.
Everyone.
Know the drill, sir.
Yes, I do. I'm almost starting to feel like you guys are my friends. I hope everybody's well. Thank you so much for your time. Everybody does know why I'm calling. We have obviously lots of issues with stormwater management. I just wanted to get an idea of, and I don't even know how, because I know that you guys aren't really allowed to talk to me, but how, is there a way that I could talk to you guys and have like more of a dialogue in the future, either on the phone or at the office if the office is open, you know, I could wear a mask or whatever. But I just want to continue to be the squeaky wheel and let you know that, you know, this isn't my job, it's my home, this is really important to me. But everybody looks well, so keep up the good work. One other thing I would add, and maybe you guys can give some guidance to this on another way at another time, or maybe we can put it on your radar. There's a lot of chatter down here about eminent domain and the racial Carson Trail. Wish they, I guess they would just come in and tell me that they're taking over my property and then everybody gets to use it. If anybody could offer any guidance on that, is that a real thing? Is it just a rumor? Do I have to worry about that? You know, of course, if they did show up, they would probably get flooded out, but you know, it's just concerning. I think it is still America and this is still McCandless. And I don't want to have to worry about that kind of stuff. So if anybody could offer any guidance on how I should proceed, I'll, I'll just listen. And thank you guys so much for being there. Special to Madam Chairman, special shout out to Shelley and Angela, to some of my favorites. Bill, I know we haven't had a chance to talk yet, but I have a feeling you're a guy that gets stuff done too. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Next comment?
So next up, we've got Gregory Wrightstone. And there's one more person in the chat box that I'm going to be handling while I queue up Gregory here. But in the meantime, I'm going to send him a camera request. And Gregory's note was that he had a comment concerning the Environmental Advisory Committee.
Yeah, I really didn't want to comment at this point because there's going to be a vote later on concerning the environmental advisory committee where I was the Ward Seven representative, the only Ward Seven representative. And I understand that you're going to be voting on changing the rules on this coming up. I'd really like to talk about this and comment after the vote is taken to see what actually transpires because it certainly appears to me that you don't, that it's politically driven rather than scientifically driven, your decision on who you will vote for rather than a qualified candidate like myself who is an accepted review, United Nations reviewer for the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change and a scientist. So I'd like to, I'd like to reserve my comments until after we've, you've taken that vote. Really, I wanted to make that, my comments later if we could.
You can make your comments at the next meeting will be your next opportunity.
I see. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, thank you, Greg. I am going to move on to the next comment. It is Libby Blackburn in 1015 Woodland Road on committee rules. And Libby, I have sent you a camera and a microphone request. There you are.
Hi, thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to say, although we have no idea who you're picking, to me, it seems improper to change the rules for something after you've already posted what the rules are. In other words, when people applied for a position, they thought that the rule was that you had to be from a particular ward. So if you were to change that, I would say that it has to be for the next committee appointments because maybe, maybe somebody like me who wasn't in that ward wanted to apply or something, but knew that there was already a person from that ward so that I couldn't be picked. So I think that probably in order to have an appearance of not any impropriety, that it would be better to make it for a future rule. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Solicitor, do you have a comment on that?
No, I don't have a comment. That's, that's the discretion of town council as to when you would want to implement that, that new policy or that change of policy, if you in fact do change it.
Okay.
I mean, there's certainly no reason you couldn't, you know, re-advertise for this position after you change the policy, knowing that your pool could potentially be different, but there's no legal requirement to do so.
Okay. Any other public comment, RJ?
That's everyone we had signed up.
Okay. All right, this closes the public comment. Is there a motion to approve the minutes submitted to each member of council for the special meeting of town council from June 8, 2020? And the meeting of town council from the special meeting and the regular meeting of June 8, 2020? That would not, of course, include the reconvened minutes, but I guess there wouldn't be much. It was just an interview. Is there a motion? Yeah, Angela Woods. This is Shelley. All right, Angela made the motion. That's the person I heard first. And Shelley, are you okay for a second? Both kind of.
I will second.
Okay, both at the same time. Were there any changes or amendments that needed to be made to the minutes? All right, no comments on that. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as submitted indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next is the public hearing on the request of Sheets Inc. to transfer liquor license number R1720 from Aurora Huts LLC 7301 Salzburg Road, Pittsburgh, PA 15236 to a new location at 8500 Perry Highway, Pittsburgh 15237. Who wants to start that off?
I, I am going to put Mr. Kozar on camera here. He is the representative from Sheets. And I do have a PowerPoint ready to go for screen sharing when the time comes.
Evening. My name is Mark Kozar. I'm with the law firm of Flirde and O'Hara. Anytime I have an opportunity to be with good people, municipal people, I always like to plug our firm. Our solely practice is liquor law and liquor licensing. This evening, I'm here on behalf of Sheets to request that Town of McCandless issue a resolution passing, admitting the intermunicipal transfer of our restaurant liquor license into the Town of McCandless pursuant to revised liquor code Title 47.
I'm just going to jump in real quick. Sorry to interrupt you, Mark. But if your, your tech consultant here could just check and see if there's a way to turn your microphone up because on my end, it's coming through very quiet and I've got the cloud recording on, on my device going. So we may not be able to hear you if you don't turn up a little bit.
That person is working.
You're muted now.
Can you hear me now?
That's a bit better.
Okay. So I'm here to request that Sheets, that you pass a resolution permitting Sheets to blue a liquor license into Town of McCandless for use at the new store that's being built at 8500 Perry Highway. As you all know, the liquor code now permits the PLCB to approve the transfer of a liquor license from any area in the county to any other municipality in the county so long as you, the receiving municipality, issue a resolution permitting that transfer. In order to make a decision, let me just give you a little bit of background on Sheets. Sheets opened their first store in Altoona in 1952. Since that time, they've opened 600 stores in six states. The vast majority of these stores sell beer and wine, including 224 stores here. There are eight other stores that have been approved by the PLCB. We're just waiting for completion of construction. May or may not know, this store on Perry Highway will have seating for 30.
Mark, you keep fading. You keep fading in and out. Is it possible for you to maybe get closer to your microphone or speak up a little bit? You keep waxy and waning.
Okay, I thought I was talking pretty loud.
Okay, so I'm sorry. You, you were coming and going. Thank you.
Some people said that about me. As you know, this store that's going, that's being built on Perry Highway will have a seating area for 30 people. It will qualify as for a restaurant liquor license, which we are proposing to move into the municipality. Store will offer beer to go up to 192 fluid ounces, which is the max under the law. Sheets will be getting wine expanded permit, so they'll be able to sell unopened bottles of wine, up to four bottles per purchase. Although the store will be open 24/7. The hours for beer sales will be Monday through Saturday, 7:00 AM to 1:45 PM. Beer cave is locked. And just to expand on that a little bit, the only place that the beer will be, store is in the beer cave. It's not going to be on the shelves. It's not going to be stacked up on the floor. So that'll be locked at 1:45. On Sundays, hours of operation will be 9:00 AM to 1:40, 1:45 AM. Wine sales statutorily must cease at 11:00 PM every night of the week. Sheets is required by the PLCB to permit on-premise consumption of beer. They prefer not to do that. Actually, we spent about a year and a half fighting with PLCB on this issue. They came down with an advisory opinion saying, if you sell beer to go, you must offer it for on-premise consumption. Sheets has a limited offering for on-premise consumption, limited to two beers per person per day. It's not something they advertise. They don't have happy hours or drink specials. They don't have any type of entertainment, video games, jukeboxes or pool tables that would keep people there to drink. All the beer that purchased, if it's going to be consumed on the premises, has to be consumed in the seating area. It can't be consumed anywhere else. There's absolutely no consumption in the outdoor area of the Sheets. They monitor that via video camera and employee policing of the area. Oh, I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry, I just saw the, the hours of operation for sale of beer will be Monday through Saturday, 7:00 AM to 1:45 AM when the beer cave is locked. Sundays, 9:00 AM to 1:45 again, if the beer cave is locked.
So just, just to make sure we, we get it on there because you have a strange microphone effect. I apologize.
I'm fine.
Yeah. You might want to try earbuds if you've got them. That might fix the microphone problem, but 1:45 AM is the time that the beer cave is locked. Is that correct?
That is.
Okay, we got that.
And wine sales statutorily must cease at 11:00 PM every night of the week. Sheets has a comprehensive alcohol management program. It starts with their carding policy. They have a 100% carding policy. This policy removes any gray area from sales. Employees don't have to make any kind of judgment calls. They do it via a card scanner. This card scanner is part of the POS system. So if a card is scanned and it shows up being underage or an invalid card, the cash register shows up in red letters, no sale. So they'll have a judgment called by the person at the cash register. If it shows up no sale, no sale will be made. The cash register can't take the SKU of the beer and/or wine. In addition, Sheets has a unique policy that none of our other clients have, and that is if two or more people come up to the cash register with a six pack of beer. For example, if three people show up with a six pack of beer at the cash register, Sheets cards all three people. And if any one of those three people is not 21, they don't make the sale because they obviously believe that this person is buying for someone who's underage. As a matter of fact, they make a record of that, that attempted purchase, handwritten record, and they also tag the video camera to save that person's image for future use to make sure that this person isn't coming in on a regular basis trying to do that. In addition, all employees receive ramp training. It's a training program that was developed by the PLCB and the Bureau of Liquor Control. It stands for Responsible Alcohol Management Program. It teaches people how to recognize fake IDs, how to recognize people who are visibly intoxicated, and how to recognize passoff situations where you have somebody who is 21, who's attempting to buy beer and/or wine for someone who is under 21. In addition to ramp, all employees receive tips training. It stands for Training for Intervention Procedures. This is a nationally recognized alcohol management program. To jump back to ramp for a second, I left one thing out. Ramp training is good for two years so that... It's me off when you put that up on the screen. Ramp training is only good for two years. You must take the test every two years to maintain your ramp service. In addition to the training and the carding policy, Sheets stores typically have between 30 to 45 security cameras that cover the entire store inside and outside. There'd be a camera inside the beer cave, there'll be a camera on the door of the beer cave. These cameras can be monitored internally by the Sheets employees. They're also monitored externally by Sheet's Security Operations Center in Klansburg. The Security Operations Center monitors the security cameras for all the stores in Sheets' chain. Every morning and every evening, they do a check-in with the store as planned. And you might notice that Sheets employees have either lanterns around their neck or earbuds. They can actually talk up to the Security Operations Center if there's an issue. And when they do that, the camera that would be on that employee immediately comes up on the screen, that person engages the employee, finds out what the problem is. Protocols for various situations. In the event that local police would need to be called, it would be the Security Operations Center to make that call, given the situation. In addition, Sheet says, over the years, voluntarily provided local police departments with security camera data and digital data. Notice that the cameras for all Sheet stores, the outside cameras, cover the fuel pump area, which also will cover the streets that are around the Sheets. So for instance, if there was a car accident in front of Sheets, the local police would just go in and ask the, ask the manager for the video that would cover what happened out on the street. And if it happens on Sheets property, or if it happens in the neighborhood. Always cooperate with police as far as being able to. Sheets is a proven and responsible owner. Significant investment in the Town of McCandless. Protected by well-trained employees and well-trained management for that. Permitting the transfer of the license into the Town of McCandless. If anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Um, in the public hearing, this is a time that council can ask some questions and then we'll go to, to public comment. So, or is there someone in council that has some questions?
Yes, Madam President, I have a few questions.
Okay, Angela?
Mr. Kozar, I apologize. It's been, it's been a little bit difficult to hear you, so I just wanted to clarify a few, a few things that you said, and I'll try and keep it in yes or no form so we can get a, a short answer and hear it. Several questions. Let me start off with, in the manual that you all provided, the alcohol policy, it said that, you know, give the limits that you described, 192 ounces of beer or 300 milliliters of unopened wine per transaction or both. You can do and, right? It's either or and. Now, it also said that there would, that the point of sale at the register does not add up those ounces, that the person behind the register would be responsible to look up with a separate sheet of paper what constituted 192 ounces. And I was wondering that, to me, it seems that a register ought to be able to say you've exceeded the limit for this, this sale on the ounces of beer or milliliters of wine, for instance. Is that something that Sheets plans to address or is that just how it works?
Actually, a very simple computation. 192 fluid ounces of beer is two six packs of 16 ounce beers. So if somebody shows up with two 12 packs of beer, that's clearly over. One 12 pack is not. And that's the only, you know, six packs and 12 packs are all they sell. So if somebody shows up with three six packs, it's clearly over the 192 fluid ounces. If they show up with two six packs or a 12 pack, under 192. But it's, it's not that complicated.
Okay. My next question is about, oh, the carding policy. You, you mentioned that if, and I apologize because this was where it got a little bit difficult to hear you from, from my, my side over here. If, if three people walked up with three six packs.
Well, my example was if three people walk up with one six pack and they'll card all three people in that group, and if any one of those three people is under 21, they won't make that sale, that six pack, even though the other two people are 21.
Okay, that's, that's my question is that's contrary to what's in the, the policy where it says there's very specific situations when you should card the entire group. Generally, you should only card individuals other than the purchaser if you have a reason to suspect that it's for someone else. And then they, they go on to give some examples of what they might say or the way they might interact with one another to kind of tip you off that the purchase is not for the person.
And that's correct. In some ways, it is a judgment call because if I showed up with my 16-year-old daughter, they're going to make the sale to me because it's my 16-year-old daughter. Although my daughter's not 16 anymore.
Okay, so I'm just concerned, is that, what, what is the policy then?
Well, the policy, the policy is if three people show up at the cash register and they all look to be about the same age and they're not related to each other, it isn't a father and two sons, they'll look at that and say, this might be a situation where one of these three might be under 21 or two of them might be under 21, we'll card all three people.
Okay, and my final question is consumption on the premises. Can you clarify that that is happening all inside of the building?
Yes, that's, that's the only place it is permitted would be in the seating area of the building. You're not permitted to carry an empty or an open beer out the door. You're not permitted to consume an open beer out on the patio or out at the gas pumps.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kozar.
Any other, any other questions from council?
I have a question. Thank you for being with us tonight, Mr. Kozar. My question is in relation to our current pandemic situation. Have other local Sheets locations, how have they handled restricted dine-in? And did they just eliminate the onsite consumption during pandemic or how was that handled by Sheets?
First off, Sheets requires, requires 100% of people entering the store to wear a mask. Number two, during the yellow phase, they did not permit, permit any on-premise consumption. Legal to do that. Now, in the green phase, people are permitted for on-premise consumption. But the one thing I have to say about on-premise consumption, it rarely happens. You know, people just don't come to Sheets to drink beer. They come to drink coffee and maybe you get a schmuffin. They come to drink coffee and maybe you get a schmuffin. But the whole business plan is that you come in, you buy some food, you buy a six-pack of beer and you go home. So they have had very little on-premise consumption prior to COVID. Complying in the green, in the locations that are in green, they're complying with the seating distancing. I've not heard of any issues regarding that.
Trish, do you have any?
We had Shelley that was trying to get her microphone working here. To ask a question.
Okay, Shelley?
I could just be delayed.
There you go.
Hear me now.
I could hear you before.
Mr. Hi, Mr. Kozar. I just was wondering how Sheets handles the situation of, obviously, convenience stores since the beginning of time, so in most states anyway, it's not BA. Sell beer and wine and things of that nature. But how does Sheets, I, I know Sheets has very excellent protocols about the sale and the safety. And what, I was wondering though, especially since this location does adjoin. A residential neighborhood is, how does, how do the Sheets employees manage the exterior parking lot safety?
They have people that, they have, they have employees who part of their job is to police the parking lot and property. So I, I don't know what. Timing of that is, whether it's every hour, whether it's every half hour. But I know that it, one employee's job. At Sheet's 24/7 is to control the, the property. Not, and obviously, they have all the security cameras out there so they can monitor the outdoor property via the. Inside the store via the security cameras.
So it's safe to say if a group of. A group of people took alcoholic beverages out of the Sheets and decided to just set up shop in their car to drink it. That your Sheets employees would find out about that pretty quickly and handle that.
Absolutely, and, and they would ask them to, to please be on their way.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from council? So I have a couple of questions. One of them is, so what is your loitering policy?
The loitering policy is that, you know, if you're, if you're there for, if a car is there with people in it for an extended period of time. They come out and say, you know, either. The customer of the store or leave the property. You just can't hang out here. And typically, they put up no loitering signs in their parking lot.
I didn't see where there would be no loitering signs. I didn't, I didn't see that anywhere.
Well, I, I know the closest Sheets to me is in Bethel Park. It's about three miles away. And I, and I know that they have no loitering signs at that store. Store I frequent most often.
I also noticed that in your PowerPoint that it says that only two beers in 24-hour period. But I haven't been able to find that in the policy. That I assume this is what the people who work there are, are trained.
They are, absolutely.
I don't see that on here anywhere. I, I've looked a couple of times. It's possible I missed it, but I don't see it anywhere.
It, it is their policy and quite frankly. Whenever somebody buys a single beer to sit down and drink it on premises, they actually write up a, a report about that. That tells you how, how infrequently it happens. Otherwise, people would just spend their whole day writing reports if everybody was sitting there drinking beer. That's how they monitor it. They actually write a report up.
So they take the person's name and say, this person drank one beer? What? How does that work?
Well, they, they, they scan your, your driver's license. So they have your driver's license information and they put it, they put it on a, a written report.
So the computer's tracking the person who's buying it and staying there and drinking, I guess?
They would, they, that's where they get the information on who the purchaser is that's going to sit down and drink it.
I didn't see that in this policy. I, I, I mean, I'm just trying to make sure that what we're hearing is indeed what we're, what's, you know, what we can see that's written down and, and I'm not really seeing that. I, I see a PowerPoint that says only two beers. I don't see a policy that says two beers. I hear no loitering, but I don't hear cars will not be allowed to sit in the parking lot for 30 minutes. I, I, I'm not seeing anything that's kind of affirming the things that I'm hearing. I, I'm not finding anything like that. Our goal, our whole goal here is to make sure that the integrity of the surrounding environment is maintained and that we don't have, you know, a lot of noise and, you know, routiness going on way into the, the middle of the night. For, because as you know, the houses are very close to this Sheet's, right? So we want to be really sensitive to those, those homeowners that are around there. So that's why we're, you know, we want to make sure.
And, and that's, that Sheet's concern too.
Okay, so I, like I said, I'm not finding these things that you're telling me about.
I, I will tell you this, these have been their policies since they started selling beer 12 years ago. Perhaps I didn't send over all the, all the parts of the policy, but. What I'm telling you is what I've told over 100 other municipalities. I'm authorized by Sheets to make these statements and true to the best of my knowledge.
Okay, do you think it would be possible for us to get those things so that we could have those?
I will, I will look into the information documentation that Sheet sent me, and if it's in there, I will send it to you.
I also looked, it also said in the fact sheet that the RAMP certification was like a class that you took, but there was no test?
No, that's not true.
Okay. All right, all right, that was, that was in there also. Does anyone else have?
Wait, wait, you're talking about, there's two things. There's RAMP training and there's RAMP certification.
Okay.
And there are two distinct things.
Okay.
RAMP training, there are two types of RAMP training. One is manager owner RAMP training, which is, is given by the PLCB. The other is server training, which is provided by third-party vendors. Once the manager is trained, once all the employees are, are RAMP trained, then you apply to the PLCB to become RAMP certified. And that means that you have to put up certain signage, have to do certain types of new employee orientation. You have to keep certain records with respect to RAMP training. And if you do all of that, then you become certified by the PLCB. No test for RAMP certification.
And there will be a RAMP certified person there while there's alcohol. Well, I guess it's, while alcohol is being sold there?
Yes.
100% of the time?
100% of the time. It's statutorily required.
Okay, at RAMP certified, not RAMP trained then? So that would be a manager that would have to be on the premises at all time that was RAMP trained, is that correct?
No, they, there can be, the employees that are making the sales must be RAMP trained.
But not RAMP certified?
A person doesn't become RAMP certified, the store becomes RAMP certified.
Okay, all right, that may be where, what, where I'm trying to understand what the difference is. Okay. Okay, I think that may be all the questions that I had. Does anyone else on council have any questions? Okay, then I think we can open it up to the public.
So we didn't have anybody directly sign up in the chat box, but we do have two text comments. That were provided during the hearing. Would you like me to read those in or?
If, if you don't mind, that's all from just looking at them.
Yeah, and Deb and Paul, if you wish to hop on camera and give a more full comment, please let us know in the chat box. But for now, I am just going to read the two things that you posted. So the first one that we got from Deb Sagan. Who I, I believe we have both of their addresses from previous public comments. But Deb made the statement that she would be concerned with how many employees will be on duty at a time. Are they assigned specifically to monitor the alcohol in loitering policy? And I, she, I would want to know if there is a security guard on property. And then, so that was Deb Sagan's comment. And then Paul Heckman asked, can we mandate that these statements are conveyed in writing? And that was during the time. Kim, that you were asking some questions about the alcohol policy. So I believe that statement was in reference to those questions. And we've got both of their addresses now.
Mark, did you want to address those questions?
Sure, and, and I, I mentioned this earlier. One, one employee per shift is tasked with. Controlling the outdoor area as part of their duties. So yes, there is somebody, an employee. Controlling the outdoor area, monitoring it. It's also monitored by the security cameras. There will not be a security guard. Oh, and I, I can't address a number of employees that are working at the time. I'm not sure for this particular store, how many employees would be on duty for each shift.
Did you say that, because you, you were fading in and out, did you say that you were not sure exactly how many would be on each shift?
No, I, I am not sure how many would be on each shift.
All right, are there any more, any other public comments?
I'm sorry, I, I don't know that I addressed Mr., Mr. Heckman's question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
RJ, could you reread that, please?
Yes, he just asked if the statements that we were discussing about particular alcohol policies could be conveyed in writing.
I think most of them have been conveyed in writing and, and to ones that haven't, I will provide some sort of writing.
Okay. All right, I do not see anything else popping up in the chat box at this time.
Is anyone in council have anything to say during this, this time? You'll get another chance at it, but during the public hearing? Okay, all right, public hearing is closed. So let's move on to liaison reports. We have, everybody did a great job this month submitting your reports. Nice job, council. So it's always nice to be able to kind of read things ahead of time and kind of stew on them a little bit. So we do have those reports. So if you have something in addition that you want to add on top of that. We've read them, but if you've got something else that you want to add, please do. Let's start with the Activities Committee.
You, you do have the report and I just want to add that. We're working to get volunteers involved in the Activities Committee. And they don't have specific jobs for them yet, but we still want to build a database. So we welcome, if you know of anybody or anybody who is interested in working with our activities. We'd love to hear from you. That's all. Thank you.
Tricia, how are you going to formally address that? Can that go out in the crier as a fill-out and send-in? Is that something we can put on the website? Is that something, how, how can we formalize that so people can do that?
Thank you. I, I am working with John on that. We've, working with another member of the committee. We created a brief but thorough application that will go out with the crier this month. And he is also working to make it a digital form that someone can fill in online.
Perfect, thank you. So we'll hear more about that. Okay, all right. I don't think anything from Community Day, no meeting, EAC?
The minutes of the 6:10 meeting are in your packet. The only thing I want to call out is one new event. Obviously, we've been stalled in the EAC for a while because of COVID. So we have partnered with the library and the PA Lime Resource Network to do a live webinar. On July 7th at 7:00 PM. The, I just saw today, the kind of digital stuff is coming out to get people to register. And part of that is a minimal donation of $100 to the library. That's for handling the technology and they're handling a lot of the publicity needs and so on. Since the EAC hasn't spent any of its money this year, we didn't do a spring cleanup. I'm assuming the council will be agreeable to that expenditure. If you're not, certainly speak up. And we'd like to keep the speaker series moving forward, hopefully eventually in person. But in the meantime, virtually is good. So if anyone has any questions, comments, that's it.
That sounds fine with me.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what the subject for this speaker was going to be, who the speaker was.
Sorry, I said, I, it's, it's one of the TikToks. It's about the PA Lime Resource Network is.
Okay, thank you.
Putting it on.
Okay. Finance Development Promotional Committee for the Heritage Center, Chuck?
Yes, the meeting was held on June 17th and the minutes are in the packet.
Okay, all right, and I think already announced that it's going to be opening back up, so that's good news. Look, Joint Rec, there was no meeting, so is our joint council member present?
No, he's not.
Okay, he did submit a thoughtful article that was to all of council. So I hope we had a chance to, to read that. Franklin Park Ambulance Authority?
Yes. So I did include in the minutes. The draft, I wanted to get the most recent minutes. They're the May 18th minutes. They are still in draft form along, they will, they'll be approved tonight. We, their, their board meetings can conflict with our town council meetings. So there was a financial information attached to their draft minutes, which you may have read. And right now, I, I, what I, I guess I'd like to say about the, about this is that. I think that this was spoken of by Bill Kirk in the past. The ambulance authorities clearly having challenging times. All ambulance authorities really are. And they are, COVID has just had a huge negative impact. So they are planning to come and talk to council. Our council as well as the other municipalities that they serve. So I suggest that. My recommendation would be to read over the information contained in the council packet. If you have any questions, you'll have the opportunity to ask them directly when we meet with them, hopefully in July. But in the meantime, if there's anything, any questions or comments that you have for me, that's fine too.
Okay. MIDA?
No meeting was held.
Okay, sorry, I see that now. Sanitary Authority?
There was a meeting held on May 7th. The minutes are in the packet.
And if anybody has comments or questions as we're going down through these, please feel free to just say your name, be recognized and, and speak up, okay? I don't, not trying to pass over anyone, but if we've read the reports and we're fine with them, then we just move along. North Hills Council of Governments, no meeting. Library?
We have the minutes in the packet from the April 28th meeting. As I was not in attendance, this was still Councilwoman Powers' committee at that time. I've asked Amy Steele to join our call just in case anyone had any questions.
God bless you.
Thanks.
Solicitor Rob?
Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Are there any questions for Amy?
Nope.
Would it be possible to get minutes a little more updated, what the last minutes are from April?
That's because we, the current minutes are still in draft form. Our board actually meets tomorrow night to approve the May minutes. So as soon as they're approved, we do send them along.
Okay, would you be comfortable with us having the draft minutes, knowing that they're draft minutes? Just so we can be, we're kind of like two. Just so we can be, we're kind of like two months behind. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but some of the other authorities actually give us their draft minutes? And then we can kind of stay updated, but bearing in mind that they are just drafts?
I can certainly bring that up to the board tomorrow night, I'll pass along that request.
Okay, it just keeps us updated a little bit, so we kind of know, you know, you guys are pretty active, so we can kind of keep up with you.
And the other thing we could do is send my director's report sooner as well. That would keep you up to date, you know, with the activities and the things that are going on as well, so.
That would be a great idea.
Okay.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks for your time, Amy, that was my report.
North Pittsburgh Community Development Authority did not meet. Personnel Board?
So we have our, the meeting packet. Really, nothing's changed right now. We are not hiring currently, so if there's any questions or comments, feel free to ask.
Okay. Planning Commission, everything has moved forward. And the report is in there, so just, you all know what we're working on. Technology Committee?
Yeah, most recent notes are included in the packet. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. No meeting for the Volunteer Firefighters Steering Committee. Zoning Hearing Board did meet, and anything additional? I do have a request, Trish. On those zoning hearing board, can we have the addresses of those properties? You know, there's no way to identify them on there.
Okay, I can ask that we get that included for sure.
Thanks, that would be helpful, so we can, you know, have in our mind where exactly these things are happening. Anything else, zoning hearing? Okay. All right, that's the liaison reports. I do not have reports or correspondence for this month. So Town Manager's Report?
Thank you, Madam President, you all did receive a copy of my written report. Just wanted to highlight that work is progressing on two multimodal projects or funded projects for Grubbs Road and for the expansion or extension of the Route 19 sidewalks. And we are working to submit grant applications to PennDOT for three or different traffic signal related projects that will have an impact on a number of different roads throughout the, or intersections throughout the community if we're successful in those, securing those grants. And that's all I have to report.
Town Attorney's Report?
Madam President, my report is on file with the town council. If there's any questions, I'm happy to address those.
Any questions for our solicitor? Okay. We have, now we're moving on to old business. So we talked about and discussed and had presented to us the reappropriation of some budget funds secondary to the changes that we've experienced from COVID. That's ordinance 1502. Is there someone who would like to make a motion to adopt that ordinance?
Madam President, I move to adopt ordinance number 1502, an ordinance reappropriating certain amounts of money within the general fund 2020 budget due to the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you, Angela, is there a second?
Second, Carolyn Swiger.
Okay, Carolyn. Were there any questions about this or concerns or? This was just us preemptively cutting some costs, approximating what Trish came up with and that our revenue cuts would be so that our balance looks good at the end of the year. So if we end up with more money than we thought we were going to have, that's awesome. But we didn't want to have a shortfall, so that's what this takes into consideration. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of adopting ordinance 1502, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, a motion carries. Okay.
Item B is to move to approve checklist number six dated May 1 through May 31, 2020, owing $1,194,691.34 as submitted to each member of council and posted on the bulletin board and the town website.
Second.
Okay. Angela? All right, are there any questions about this or comments about the list of bills or checks? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting checklist number six, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, a little delay there, opposed? All right, motion carries. This, number C, it was resolution number eight that we had talked about earlier that Gavin put together for us to make. So all of our committees would be at large. They would no longer be ward specific. And that would include the Heritage Center, the EAC, and the Activities Committee. Is what this, what this was about. Is there a motion? Okay. Is there a second?
Second, Chuck Mazur.
Second.
Okay, Chuck? Okay. I'm sorry? Shelley?
I was going, I was going to take the motion.
I was reading it.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
I move to adopt resolution number nine of the 2020 series, a resolution amending policies for appointing members of the town's Environmental Advisory Committee, Financial Development and Promotional Committee, parentheses Heritage Center and paren, and Activities Advisory Committee to eliminate the requirement that council must appoint a member from each ward of the town and to permit at-large appointments.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have questions and comments?
Madam President, I believe two of the people who commented earlier made some very valid points that we were in the middle of the process for interviewing and appointing a member for the EAC when we decided to kind of change the game. So in my opinion, we either need to reopen that appointment and re-advertise so that it's known that it's open to anybody as an at-large position and not just a Ward Seven position. Or make this effective after we make that appointment, in which case we would have to appoint the Ward Seven candidate because that's the rules that they applied under. Seeing as this position expires in 2020, I'm sorry, in 2022, I would be in favor of reopening the process and making it clear that it's an at-large position so that we can attract candidates and make it a more fair process.
I think that's actually a good idea, because especially since the EAC does its reappointments in August, which is like we're advertising for them now, that we can, I think that's a good idea to just totally open it up and then it's fair for everybody. I think that's a good idea. I think it's a point well made.
To your point, Madam President, I believe there's, are there three positions coming open this year? 2020, I believe either three or four of them expire. I apologize, I'd have to look, but in that case, then we could, we could open it for four seats, broadly advertise for at-large positions and make all the appointments at one time.
I think that's a great idea. I like that.
Would we need to amend the motion in that case?
No, you don't. I mean, you could, you can go ahead and, you know, point this or adopt this new, adopt this resolution establishing the new policy, you know, you could just table the appointment at the end of the meeting for the EAC. And then the new, the new policy will be in place and then you can just re-advertise.
Is everybody okay with that? Is anyone not okay with that? All right, all right, so that's how we'll handle this, this particular situation. Is there any other comments or concerns about this change or anything anyone want to say? Okay, all right, hearing none. All those in favor of adopting resolution number nine, making all the appointments at large, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, motion carries, it's unanimous. D, this was the awards, McCandless Awards of Recognition that we had talked about earlier. And this is just the official policy on how to, on how, how we would go about this. And I think it's a lot nicer because it's not just council making these appointments, but anyone in the town can nominate somebody. So that really opens it up to more people. So is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to adopt resolution number 10 of the 2020 series, a resolution establishing policy for McCandless Awards of Recognition.
Thank you.
Second, Carolyn Swiger.
Okay. Any comments? Things that you think need to be changed here at the last minute or questions?
I just, I actually think it was, I had an opportunity to read it again in advance of this meeting. Whoever prepared it, and if it was you, Madam President, I think it's, it's really good. And I would, I think it gives a great opportunity, as we discussed last week, that there doesn't need to be a limit to it. It's a great way for anyone to try to to give someone, someone who's accomplished something credit for it and do it in a way that I'm sure they would be very proud to be given such an award by the town. So, well done.
There is, there is no resolution that is ever put forward by any single person. It is always a group of people that have worked on this. Trish helped me with this. Bob, Gavin, it was, it was a joint effort. There were good ideas from everyone, and I think we had a good, a good outcome. So, so thank everyone for collaborating on that, thank you. Any other comments about this? Okay, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. New business. We need to review the bond release from the Walnut Court Development. Trish, are you here, are you doing this or you don't?
I'll actually do it. This is coming in front of you as a result of a discussion that RJ and I had with our engineers. And the general feeling amongst those of us in that meeting were that our, our practices, our experience always has been that the elected officials should look at these reviews, these requests to reduce the performance bonds associated with land developments so that when it comes time to make those final decisions and release the last amount of a performance bond in lieu of having a maintenance bond in place, that no one's really surprised by the fact that this is coming up. So what historically goes on is that the engineers do periodic inspections of the land developments. They confirm that an amount of work has been done. The developer makes a request, the engineers review and confirm that. And then essentially what the engineers confirm is the final amount of the the bond reduction request. We, we all feel, the engineers, RJ and I, feel that that should be associated with an action of the council so that you're aware of it and so that it's public knowledge that work has been completed and that we deem that part of the work that has been completed acceptable in compliance with our rules and regulations. So if, unless there are any questions, we can make that a motion at the July 13th meeting just so that you don't feel as if anything's being ramrodded tonight, since this is all new to you. Any questions?
I have a question. I understand the engineers are looking to make sure all the plans that are in place and protocols followed. Does this bond allow for release or negotiation prior to it being tested by a weather event? So many of our residents in McCandless are dealing with stormwater issues, et cetera. And I, and I think possibly some of the folks have, feel like maybe things weren't tested by strong weather events before they were allowed to happen. Is there a time, you know, that we watch these things for a few months to make sure that, you know, that everything's performing as they should? Instead of just looking at it and saying it is up to spec?
Throughout the, the course of a development, we're, we're looking to ensure not only is it built properly, built according to the requirements that we have set forth, but the first indication that something isn't built correctly is the fact that there may be a problem related to the storm, or how it handles itself in the storm. So as much as we're able to see that functioning, dependent on where they are in the development, that is, becomes part of what we're looking at. And as the development proceeds, we see more and more of how the development's functioning to make sure that everything is, is functioning properly before any final releases are approved. And unfortunately, this is something that had been done administratively in the past, and we don't feel that is the best course of action moving forward.
I like council seeing it, and I like the public seeing it, so thanks for bringing it forward. I like it, I think it's a good practice, I think it's a good policy, thank you, Bob. Any other questions about this? You can vote, you'll have another chance to ask questions next meeting when it's brought to vote. Okay. The next order of business is to adopt a resolution number 11 of the 2020 series, a resolution declaring that the towns intend to destroy public records in accordance with the schedules and procedures for the disposition of records set forth by the Municipal Records Manual. This is a chance for the town to get rid of things, we only have to keep stuff so long. We should all have this in our house, keep stuff so long, get rid of it. And also, council members can also dispose of town papers at this time, too, that you would like to have, it's a shredding event. So is there a motion for this resolution?
Move to adopt resolution number 11 of the 2020 series, a resolution declaring the town's intent to destroy public records in accordance with the schedules and procedures for disposition of records as set forth in the Municipal Records Manual.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Trish.
All right, Shelley? Okay, are there any questions, comments about this? Just housekeeping. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. C, this resolution number 12, a resolution applying the pending ordinance. C, this resolution number 12, a resolution applying the pending ordinance doctrine, hereby making immediately effective an ordinance amending the codified ordinance of the town of McCandless at Part 13, Title III, to adopt additional regulations on the conditional use criteria governing oil and gas well production and related activities and to be restrict oil and gas development to institutional zoning district in the town. So we talked about this, the pending ordinance doctrine. Just kind of puts a hold on things until we get our new ordinance together. Is there a motion?
I so move.
Okay, all right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Are there any questions about this or any comments? Gavin, did I leave anything out or is that pretty good?
No, you didn't. You know, as council may have noticed, there were some changes to this version from the one that was originally presented to you. And that was the result of us incorporating a number of what we thought are really good comments that we received at the Planning Commission meeting. So that, you know, we made it, we tried to make it clear. You know, it's unfortunately very unwieldy at 34 pages. It's not ideal, but there's just a lot of ground to cover. A lot of that is taken up with additional requirements that applicants will have to submit to the town in order for us to give a full thorough review of any applications that come before the town. And then the other sort of big chunk is really all the health, safety, and welfare, you know, additional regulations that we're adding in there. So there's a lot to consume here content-wise. And as Ms. Zachary said, that this sort of holds these regulations in place as the town moves forward with the formal adoption process of this zoning amendment. So that, you know, this will go back now to the Planning Commission and likely then shortly thereafter will be submitted to the county planning for review when we feel like it's in its final form or close to it. So other than that, unless anyone else has any questions or unless RJ can pick up anything that I might have missed, I think that's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from council? Or RJ? Okay. All those in favor of adopting the pending ordinance doctrine for oil and gas, indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. So we're up to the EAC appointment. Does someone want to make a motion to table this?
Yes, I'm making a motion. We table that.
Carolyn Swiger, second.
Do we need any comments or questions about this one? Kind of talked about it. Okay. All those in favor of tabling the EAC appointments until we can advertise them at large, all of them together, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Is there a motion for the technology, for appointment to Technology Advisory Committee?
Madam President, I move to appoint Scott Schiffkins as a member of the Technology Advisory Committee with a term to expire June 30, 2023.
My second, Chuck Mazur.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or any questions? Okay. All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Is there any other new business?
Yes, I have a point in new business. Due to a recent series of escalating health issues, I've decided to resign my position in the town of McCandless Council.
Do you have, I'm sorry to hear that, Chuck. Of course, we hope the best for your health. We know how much work this is and how much of our time that it takes. So we certainly understand that. Is that effective immediately or what is your time on that?
I guess I would have to formalize a letter to Bob to do that. So what's the preference there today or end of the month? Not longer than that?
Well, it would certainly be based on your situation.
Okay. In that regard, let's, let me see here. Well, just make it effective today because I'm not, I can't change my mind. I have a large series of issues that have to be taken care of and no one needs to know all the details. But we'll make that effective today and then I'll create a letter and I'll send that.
All right, Chuck, thank you. We wish the best for you.
All right, thank you.
I'm sad to hear this. Best wishes. It's been nice serving with you.
Thank you. I haven't been involved for just the six months, but I've met some good people here, but I just can't give what I would consider the right amount of time and effort. And I need to solve some other health problems, as I said, so thank you.
All right, thank you.
We wish you the best, Chuck Mazur. Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we wish you the best.
Thank you.
Take care. Any other new business?
Madam President, I have a question. I'm surprised to hear this. I'm sad about this resignation as well. But do we need to decide on the appointment for Councilwoman Powers' position? Or will we, is it assumed it will follow the same procedure that we did when Councilman Kirk resigned?
We announced it right away. Well, we announced it like a week later. So we're taking applications for, I think it was 13 days, 12 days? Bob, help me.
Yeah, through July 6.
Through July 6. We still only have 45 days from the time of resignation to appoint a person. So we just looked at the calendar to see how the meetings fell so we would have time to interview and to appoint and then have a little extra time just in case we needed more time to think about it. So those, give us the date on that, Bob. I don't have that in front of me.
The applications or the resumes are due July 6 at noon. We'll forward those to all of you as we receive them, when we receive them. And the intent would be to conduct interviews on July 13.
Right, okay.
And make an appointment the next meeting? Is that still within 45 days?
If we can't make an appointment on July 13, we would consider a special meeting in order to.
Because we're out of time.
Okay.
We would have to be done prior to the next meeting.
And while we can do a special meeting, there's advertisement constraints and things like that that have to be taken, of course, into consideration. And I personally, if we could possibly do it at a scheduled meeting, I think it would allow for a little bit more transparency and maybe no people think, oh, special meeting. So if we could keep it on the schedule of our regular meetings, I would like to do that. If we can't, then we do what we need to do. But that's my thought about that. Special meetings sometimes raise suspicion in people. And I know Bob will have Councilmember Mazur's position going up tomorrow so that we can get started on that because of our 45-day time.
I've already notified John.
Okay.
Okay. As an immediate concern then, for instance, for the Finance Development and Promotional Committee for the Heritage Center, Councilwoman Mazur was the alternate already. I believe that Councilwoman Powers had been the liaison for that. How will we cover that?
I will look at all of those things.
Okay.
Yeah.
There actually, I don't believe that there's going to be a meeting prior to the 13th.
Right, but we'll shuffle around what we need to and I appreciate council's flexibility, especially people that maybe have some committees that don't have any meetings, right? So they might have some extra time. So I'll let you know and please give me your feedback. If you're like, hey, I'll be glad to pick this up or pick that up. Please give me your feedback if a meeting's going to occur. But my goal is, you know, that's, I think that's probably why the 45-day limit is there so we can get people plugged back in so we can keep things rolling. So that was a good question. Any other questions? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. Second? Okay, Carolyn. All right. Thank you, everyone. Enjoy the rest of your evening. Good night.
Good night.
Bye.